To climate change, a crisis caused by developed countries in the first place, who have historically contributed the most to global warming. This concept of climate justice is what enabled and animates the Paris Agreement, which I defended in the sponsorship in the Senate a few years ago, which recognized our common but differentiated responsibility and respective capabilities in tackling the climate crisis. Against this backdrop and given the state of the climate emergency today, we emphasize what COP26 must mean, what it must deliver, what its results must be, and what outcomes we, as legislators especially, must be closely monitoring as a talks progress. To be clear, these are just some of the many things that COP26 must achieve if it is to be a summit of survival. I say survival because that is precisely what is at stake, not success or failure, but survival or oblivion. Much more needs to be done on the four key themes of COP26: securing global net zero by mid-century and keeping 1.5 degrees Celsius within reach; urgent adaptation to protect communities and natural habitats; mobilizing finance, climate finance; working together to deliver the means of implementation of the Paris Agreement and beyond. The parties at COP26 must agree on a clear and concrete delivery plan for the annual 100 billion US dollars over five years pledged by developed countries to developing ones from 2020 to 2024, after which we expect the amount to increase. This commitment does not just represent one of the key outcomes of the Paris Agreement, as others have noted. It is the very glue that holds the treaty together. We must emphasize to all parties at COP26, the time for pledges and promises is over. Now is a time for concrete plans and action. We expect the Philippine delegation to lead in pushing the parties at COP26 to deliver on this front. Without this and without the means of implementation of the Paris Agreement, we will not be able to build the capacity and technical know-how. We need to avoid more GHG emissions, even if we are only a one-third of 1% emitter in the world. We will not be able to survive the intensifying impacts of climate change that our people confront on a daily basis. If we cannot secure what developed countries owe vulnerable developing ones, we are only poisoning the trust that was painstakingly built to enable the Paris Agreement. If COP26 will not talk about finance, we might as well not talk at all. COP26 must take concrete action on loss and damage, a critical component of the UNFCC intended to avert, minimize, and address loss and damage associated with climate impacts. That includes both extreme weather events and slow onset events. COP26 must ensure that timely technical assistance reaches the countries that are most vulnerable to climate change. COP26 must make this integral to its outcome. In our energy sector alone, and it was just discussed by Deputy Speaker Marcoletta and Congresswoman Ria Vergara, who knows it very well. Electric cooperatives were hit with 3.16 billion pesos in infrastructure damage due to extreme weather events, and that is just in the span of six months in 2020. We cannot transition to resilience, much less transition to clean renewable energy if we do not move the issue of loss and damage forward in COP26. We have a looming food crisis too. Food production around the world will suffer as global heating reaches 1.5 degrees Celsius. Already, the increased heat and humidity are harming our crops and livestock, with droughts and floods wiping out harvests as well. For Southeast Asia, the warming of the earth is not just changing rainfall patterns, but also a threat to the glaciers that irrigate millions of our rice lands. Not only this, we are seeing consequences of rising energy prices, which has already resulted in fertilizer prices roughly tripling. This will cascade through global agriculture. A smallholder farms cannot afford the higher costs and thus undermine food production. The world is facing the possibility of a dramatic shortfall in food production. Vulnerable regions cannot afford any more food insecurity, especially at a time when access to food is already under threat from the COVID-19 pandemic and climate change. COP26 is set to tackle something particularly important to the Philippines: the finalization of the rules for Article VI of the UN Framer Convention on Climate Change, which involves the modalities and procedures for implementing cooperative approaches between developed and developing nations. At COP25, the last one, in December 2019, the Philippine delegation, which I headed then, introduced the concept of emissions avoidance in the context of the country's insignificant contribution to the global warming problem with emissions at 0.3% of the global total emissions. The Philippines should continue to push the eligibility of activities for emissions avoidance in the case of developing countries given a right to a remaining development space. As we work to accelerate climate action and ambition in COP26, we must realize that we cannot expect the rest of the world to move while we stand still. I reiterate my call to constantly raise climate ambition, even in our own national targets. We will bring our nationally determined contribution, which was submitted in April this year, to COP26. As it stands, our NDC communicates a 75% reduction in avoidance by 2030. It is true that this is higher than the 70% target in our intended NDC way in 2015, and yet, 72.29% of this is conditional or contingent on the support of climate finance, technologies, capacity development from developed countries. While we acknowledge the importance of such support for developing countries, we cannot deny our NDC, as it is, is virtually business as usual, if over 95% of it will remain conditional over this critical decade. And this is a decade of ecological restoration until 2030. And 2030 is the window where the SDGs or the Sustainable Development Goals of the UN closes as well. COP26 therefore is a platform to help us enhance even more our climate ambition. Mister Speaker, dear colleagues, allow me to reiterate our imperatives. We need a clear delivery plan from developed countries on the 500 billion US dollars that they promised us. We need to move global action on loss and damage forward. We need to reevaluate our own NDC and constantly raise action and ambition. Lives and livelihood of Filipinos today and in the future hang in the balance. And I believe this is something which all candidates, presidential, vice presidential, senatorial, and especially district representatives and local government officials must take on on their platforms, virtually or physically, because it means the life of every Filipino. Because the truth is, in the end, our planet will survive. It will find a way to adapt to the changing climate that we humans created. Life will find a way, it will find a way without us if it has to. We are not, strictly speaking, destroying the planet. What we are destroying or doing is changing it to a point where we can no longer live in it. In short, it is not our planet, but our people that need our saving. And I believe this is every inch a human rights issue, the basic to life, basic right to clean potable water, the basic right to clean air, the basic right to have food on our table, the right to life. Whether at COP26 or in the halls of this August chamber to which I proudly belong, at least for one term, or wherever we are, let this be our reminder. We have much more work to do. But let's begin by securing these imperatives at COP26. In doing so, we may yet secure a safer, greener, sustainable future that every member of this house dreams for their family, for their community and constituents, for our country and our planet. Allow me a few more minutes to heighten or highlight an issue that is as important as global warming and climate change. And perhaps more immediate, I would like to draw your attention to the poor quality and unhealthy state of the air that we breathe every single day. November this month is Clean Air Month, and this year's observance is made more significant by the release of the 2021 World Health Organization Global Air Quality Guidelines on September 23, 2021. The new guidelines provide clear evidence of the damage that air pollution inflicts on human health and recommend new air quality levels to protect the health of populations by reducing levels of key air pollutants. Millions of premature deaths around the world have been attributed to poor air quality and millions more are exposed to higher levels of pollution from a growing number of pollution sources, and some of the pollutants also contribute to climate change. In the 11th Congress, I co-authored Republic Act Number 8749, the Philippine Clean Air Act, to institutionalize a holistic national program of air pollution management to ensure clean air and to promote public health. And this law mandates the Department of Environment and Natural Resources as a lead agency to base national ambient air quality standards on World Health Organization standards, but shall not be limited or be less stringent than such standards. Let me just cite one example to describe to you the work that needs to be done. The Philippine Standard for Particulate Matter 2.5 or PM 2.5 is 25 micrograms per normal cubic meter annually versus the WHO Air Quality Standard of 5 micrograms per normal cubic meter. This means we allow four times more of PM 2.5 in our air annually. The Philippine Standard for PM 2.5 is 35 micrograms per normal cubic meter for 24 hours. And 2005 WHO Global Air Quality Guidelines is 25 micrograms per normal cubic meter, and the 2021 Guidelines set it at 15 micrograms per normal cubic meter for 24 hours. This means that we are allowing 1.5 times the pollution of particulate matter 2.5 or PM 2.5 in our air if we use the 2005 Guidelines and using the 2021 Guidelines, we will actually miss it by more than 200% what is deemed to be safe. Bakit ba tayo palaging huli? Parang hindi alam ang nangyayari sa mundo at sa mga organisasyon na dapat itugma natin ang ating mga standards. Mister President, dear colleagues, the size of PM 2.5 is only 5% of the thickness of a human hair. This is a pollutant that is so small and insidious that it can get into the bloodstream, that it's able to cross into the placental barrier. I therefore urge this chamber to pass a resolution, perhaps together with our esteemed colleagues in the Senate, to take cognizance of the 2001 WHO Air Quality Guidelines and to constitute the Congressional Oversight Committee on the Clean Air Act, which we had before, Oversight Committee on Clean Air, on Clean Water, and on Ecological Solid Waste. Through this effort, we hope to help ensure that we are able to support the concerned national agencies, especially now that we are discussing the budget, in protecting environment and public health. The adverse impacts of climate change and poor air quality. I've not even gone into water. I've not even gone into ecological solid waste, but there's not much time. These do not recognize political colors, nor seasons, or political boundaries, or geographical regions. It is incumbent upon us to come together and take leadership in the effort to promote the health of our environment and the fragile health of our people. Ultimately, the earth, our home, is giving us a final exam today. If we pass it with courage, conviction, and with innovation, our children and our children's children, we look back with gratitude. However, Mister Speaker, if we fail, our generation will be harshly judged on it. I therefore appeal to my dear colleagues to make this a political issue because it is a matter of survival, to encourage each presidentialman and those running for higher office, and make each district a climate adaptive, resilient, sustainable district. And in so doing, it will be said that this Congress, when COP26 and Glasgow happened, would have been the Congress that have changed the trajectory of this vulnerable nation into one that can be safe, just, humane, resilient, and sustainable. Thank you so much, Mister Speaker, my esteemed colleagues.
Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of Deputy Speaker Lauren Ligarda be referred to the Committee on Rules. So move on, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we extend the period of privilege hour.
There is a motion to extend the privilege hour. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion to extend the privilege hour is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Ferdinand Argaita of Bayan Muna Party List for his privileged speech. So move, Mister Speaker.
Honorable Ferdinand Gaita of Party List Bayan recognized for his privileged speech.
Salamat po, gagaling-galing na speaker. Naririnig po ba ako?
Yes, please proceed.
Salamat po. Gagaling-galing na speaker, mga kapo-kinatawan sa mga manggagawa at kababayan nating nanunuod at nakikinig gayon. Isang magandang hapon. Mas maganda sana'y magandang gabi dahil kakila-kilabot ang aking privilege speech. Kakatapos pa lamang ng Halloween, pero merong kwentong patuloy na naghatid ang takot sa ating mga kababayan. Na kung sino man, ang nakarinig ay tiyak. Natatayo ang balahibo. Nito nga lang ay nanggulat na naman at naghatid ang labis na takot at pangamba sa ating mga kababayan. Ito ay ang krisis sa empleyo at kawalan ng regular na trabaho. Sa inilabas na Labor Force Survey ng Philippine Statistics Authority para sa buwan ng Septiembre 2021, tinatayang nasa 8.9% ang unemployment rate. Katumbas ito ng 4.25 milyon Pilipino na walang trabaho. Ang tantos na ito ay mas mataas kumpara sa 8.1% o 3.88 milyon na naitala noong buwan ng Agosto. Ito ang pinakamataas na unemployment rate sa higit na isang taon mula nung Julio 2020. Kung saan nakapagtala, nakapagtala ng 10% unemployment rate ang bansa. Malayo pa rin ito kumpara sa unemployment rate bago magpandemya na nasa 5.3% noong Enero 2020. Ang 642,000 nakalta sa bilang ng employed at 323,000 naman na pagtaas ang bilang ng unemployed ay dapat ikatakot at ikabahala. Ang sektor ng agrikultura nakapagtala ng pinakamalaking bilang na nawalan ng trabaho na humabot sa humigit-kumulang 862,000. Sinunod na ito ng manufacturing, 343,000. Information and communication, 126,000. Mining and quarrying, 75,000. At real estate activities, 69,000. Di rin ligtas ang kabataan sa hugupit ang krisis ng Saint Niño. Bumaba ang youth employment rate mula 84% o 6.38 milyon noong Agosto tungong 82.3% o 5.92 milyon nitong Septiembre. Tumaas naman ng bahagya ang bilang ng kabataang walang trabaho mula sa 1.22 milyon noong Agosto tungong 1.27 milyon nitong Septiembre. Samantala, ang tantos naman ng underemployment ay tinatayang nasa 14.2% o katumbas ng 6.88 milyon para sa buwan ng Septiembre. Ibig sabihin, marami sa mga may trabaho na ang nakukulangan sa tinatanggap nila sahod at tagahangad ng dagdag o bagong trabaho para makasapat ang kinikita sa pangangailangan ng pamilya. May trabaho ka nga, pero nakakatakot pa rin dahil kontraktual ka naman. Ito ang nakakilabot na historia ng marami na ng ating manggagawa. Next slide po ata, sa slide noong Contractuals. Susunod po ata. Susunod pong slide. Susunod po slide. Ayan. Op, dumagpas. Yan. Sa datos and doli, mahigit anim na danglibo pa lang ang manggagawang kontraktual na narigolarisa. Alam natin, mas marami pa ang totoong bilang na manggagawang kontraktual sa buong bansa. Sino ba ang hindi natatakot na mabilang sa mga walang trabaho? Sino ba ang hindi nanginginig kung sakaling may mangyari sa'yo sa trabaho? Kunyari na lang. Pero wag sana na magka-COVID ka. Walang benepisyo dahil ikaw ay kontraktual. Sino ba ang hindi nangangamba na sa kabila ng lahat ng pagod at pagsisika po ay hindi pa rin sapat ang kinikita para hustosan ang pangailangan ng iyong pamilya? Lalo na pag magkasakit o magkaroon pa ng ibang malughang suliremin. Ito po ang kuludus-lunus na kalagayan ng ating mga kababayan ngayon. Ah, 'yung slide po tungkol sa inflation, sa inflation. Yan, salamat. Bukod sa krisis sa empleyo, ay nandyan din ang mataas na presyo ng bilihin at servisyo dulot ang mataas ng inflation rate. Ayon sa P S A nitong Oktubre, ay pumalo sa 4.6% ang inflation rate. Mas mababa ito kesa sa 4.8% na naitala noong Septiembre, pero mataas pa rin ito kumpara sa target ng gobyerno na nasa 2% to 4% lamang para sa buong taong 2021. Mas damad ng mahihirap na pamilya ang pagtaas ang presyo ng bilihin dahil nasa 4.8% ang inflation rate para sa bottom 30% income households. Bagamat may pagbaga sa pagtaas ang presyo ng pagkain gaya ng karde, masda, at gulay, na natili pa ring mataas ang food inflation rate sa 5.6% nitong Oktubre mula sa 6.5% noong Septiembre. Ang pinaka nakakabagabag ay ang sunod-sunod na pagtaas ang presyo na langis. Sampung linggo ng sunod-sunod na nagtaas ang presyo na langis. Kung susumahin mula Enero ngayong taon, 19 pesos and 65 centavos kada litro ang tinaas ang presyo ng gasmina. 18 pesos kada litro sa disen at 15 pesos 49 centavos kada litro ng gasmina. Ang LPG naman ay limang sunod na buwan na rin nagtaas ang presyo. Pumapalo na ng mahigit isang libo ang isang tanken ng LPG. Dahil sa taas singil ng produkong petrolyo, tumaas ang transportation inflation tungong 7.1% mula 5.2% dati. Habang ang private transportation naman ay tumaas ng 16.7% tungong 25.5%. Dumadaing na ang mga PUB drivers at maliit na operator dahil lalo lubit ang kakarampot na nga nilang kinikita. Tapos nasa gitna pa rin tayo ng pandemya, kaya mas lalo sila ang nababahala para sa kanilang kaligtasan, kapakanan, at ang kanilang pamilya. Sa gitna ng lahat na ito, krisis sa empleyo, pagsirit ng presyo na langis at bilihin, tahimik ang ating Pangulong Presidente. Marami siyang tirada sa mga kritiko, kalaban sa politika, at mga senador sa nag-iimbisiga sa koraksyon sa farmilya, pero tahimik siya sa pagdating sa daing ng masang anak pawis. Nakakagalit na pinababayaan na lang ng gobyerno ang masang naghihikahos at di magkanda ugaga paano papakainin ang kanilang pamilya. Nakakagalit, pero hindi nakakagulat ang kawalan ng malasakit ang pamahalaan ito sa ating mga manggagawa. Sa loob na limang taong panunupunan ni Paulino Duterte, walang natupad sa kanyang mga pangako sa manggagawa at mamamaya. Walang matinong employment program. Employment Generation Program ang gobyerno. Patunay dito ang tumataas na bilang ng unemployment. Nasaan na ang pinagmamalaking National Employment Recovery Strategy ng pamahalaan? Ikita-kitang tumataas nga ang bilang na walang trabaho. Uro buladas lang pala ito. Malihing silbi ang pamahalaan sa usapin ang kontraktoisyon. Walang silbi ang pamahalaan sa usaping kontraktoisasyon. Sasabihing priority, pero babawiin. Si Duterte mismo ang marang sa pagpapatupad ng sarili niyang pangako. Tinirikura niya ang kanyang pangako, wakasan ang kontraktoisasyon noong idito niya ang Security of Tenure Bill. Naglabas man ng doli o Department of Labor ng Dole Order Number 174. Nagbabawal di umano sa kontraktoisasyon, pero maraming regularization orders na naipagpagbubay ang mga manggagawa, pero binaligtad ang mismong kalihim ang Department of Labor and Employment. Sa usapin ang sahod. Sa ilalim ni Duterte, pinaka kaunti at pinakabarat ang kinaas ng minimum wage. Dalawang beses lang nagkaroon ng dagdag na minimum wage sa loob ng limang taon. Ang sahod ng manggagawa sa NCR ay 537 kada buwan, kada araw, sorry, at sa ibang riyon ay mas mababa pa. Ang pinakmababang Regional Daily Minimum Wage San Jose ay sa biko region na 310 pesos kada araw. 325 naman sa Visayas, Region 8, at 316 sa Mindanao, sa Region 9. Dalawang beses na nga lang nagtaas, ang tinas pa ay halos walang naidagdag sa tunay na halaga ng sahod. Dahil sa patuloy na pagtaas ang presyo na langis at bilihin, ang 537 pesos kada araw ay tiyak na mas mababa sa tunay na halaga o real value. Naaabot na lamang ito sa higit 4 araang piso. Magkakaiba man ang sahod kada riyon, pero ang realidad ay hindi naman nagkakalayo ang standard of living dahil buong bansa ay apektado ng krisis sa ekonomiya. 'Yung slide po tungkol sa Family Living Wage. Yan. Sana lang aabutin ang sahod ng manggawa. Mismong gobyerno na nagsasabi na kailangan ng isang pamilya Mismong gobyerno na nagsasabi na kailangan ng isang pamilya na may limang miyembro ng 42,000 kada buwan o 1,615 kada araw para mabuhay ng disente. Wala pa sa kalahati ang kinikita ng mga manggagawa. Kaya talaga nakakatakot itong multing pagtaas ng sahod. Kaya talaga nakakatakot itong multing pagtaas ng sahod. Bakit? Dahil bumu lang ang mapupunta sa manggagawa. Habang milyon-milyon at malaki pa sa kapre ang kinikita ng mga malalaking kompanya. Kinadatakutan naman ang pamahalaan na parang multo ang usapin ng dagdag sa sahod. 2018 pang huling minimum wage increase sa NCR. At ang panukalang batas para sa national minimum wage at dagdag benepisyo sa manggagawa ay mistulang nakalibing sa humay. Nung pumasok ang pandemya, tuluyan pang nabaon sa limot ang usapin ng dagdag sahod. Totoong lahat ay apektado ng rumagasa ang pandemya. Marami nagsarang negosyo na nagdulot ang kawalan ng trabaho sa marami. Pero marami ang nanawagan na dapat umaksyon ang pamahalaan sa pamamagitan ng pagbigay ng ayuda sa mga nawalan ng trabaho, wage subsidy sa manggagawa, at support at ayuda rin sa micro, small, and medium enterprises para makapanatili ang negosyo habang tinutugunan ang responsibilidad sa manggagawa na sahod at benepisyo. Lahat ng ito ay ginogoost ng pamahalaan. Sa pag-aaral ng ILO o International Labor Organization sa panahon ng pandemya ay may mga bansa nagpatupad ng wage subsidies. Maniwala kayo sa hindi para mapanatili na nakakapagtrabaho ang mga manggagawa habang nakukapagpatuloy ang mga negosyo. Bukod rito, marami rin ang mga bansa na may scheduled minimum wage adjustments ito 2020, panahon na ng pandemya. Pero itinuloy ang minimum wage adjustments. Ito'y ginawa nila sa layuning itaas ang kapasidad ng mga manggagawa na gumastos at makatulong sa ekonomiya na ginupun ng pandemya para mapalaki ang aggregate demand sa mga produk at serbisyo para ulikot ang ekonomiya. May mga kaparehong panawagan na mga labor groups at maging mga small businesses, business owners. Pero pinili maging bingi at bulag dito ang rehimin. Ghosting uli. Sa gitna ng pandemya, lalong sumahol ang kalagayan ng manggawa. Milyon-milyon ang nawalan ng trabaho at kabuhayan. Ginamit pa ng ibang kompanya ang pandemya para ipatupad ang flexible labor schemes, mandatory furlough, forced leave of absence, no vaccine, no work, no vaccine, no pay. At iba pa ang mga pulisiya na lalo nanggigigit sa kalagayan ng mga manggagawa. Ipinagdadamot ang pamahalaan ang ayuda ang kinakailangan ng mamamayan. Sa sunod-sunod na dagok na idinulot ang pandemya at krisis pang ekonomiya sa manggagawa at masang anak pawis, takot na takot at iwas na iwas ang gobyerno sa usapin ang ayuda. Nihintiban lang pakinggan ang panawagan ng manggagawa para the daily wage subsidy, unemployment benefits, paid pandemic leave, at iba pa. Saan ba napunta ang bilyo-bilyo ang inutang ng gobyerno para sa pandemic response? Lagpas 11.9 trillion pesos na ang inutang ng bansa pero hanggang ngayon nagdurusa pa rin tayo sa pandemya. Ang pondo sa ayuda ay parang multo, bigla na lang naglalaho. Yun pala ang, yun pala eh napupunta sa bilsa na kasino-sino. May kumita, may mga pandemic profiteers. Ang naglalahong pondo sa ayuda ayun, ayun, laging Lexus na sumulpot na parang espírito sa garahay na kung sino. Halimaw ang rehming ito para sa mga manggagawa. Gobyerno na mismo nagsasabi na economic frontliners ang ating mga manggagawa pero kung ituring ay parang basura. Walang ayuda, walang kasigurohan sa trabaho at ligtas na lugar paggawa. Kakarampot ang sahod. Silang manggagawa na sinusuong ang bantahan ng sakit para lang makapagtrabaho at umikha ng yaman na siyang nagsasalba sa ekonomiya mula sa krisis. Sila ang laging kinakalimutan at patuloy na binubusabos at pinahirapan na parang hinahagupit ng buntot pagi. Sa ilalim ng panunukulan ni Pangulong Duterte, halos mamatay ang mga manggagawa sa kapabayaan at pambubusabos ng rehimen. Ang masahol pa kapag sila'y magpahiyag ng kanilang kaluluslulus na kalagayan, ang isasagot ang gobyerno ay dahas at sila'y babansagan terrorista. Ang mga puwerta ng estado sa pagmumuno ng NTF at Elka ay walang tigil na pag-atake sa mga unyon at manggagawa. Tuloy-tuloy ang mga ulat ang harassment, intimidation, forced disaffiliation, union intervention, red tagging, at iba pa sa mga unyon at iba pa sa mga unyon at manggagawa. May ilang pinilabas na sumrenderdaw at rebeldé. Marami na rin ang ilegal na inarresto at pinulong dahil sa gawa-gawang kaso. Sa katunayan, limamput anim na manggagawa ang pinaslang sa ilalim ng administrasyon ni Pangulong Duterte. Tanong, terorismo ba kung sasabihin ng manggagawa na kontraktual siya? Terrorismo ba kung sasabihin niyang kulang ang sinasahod niya? Terrorismo ba kung sasabihin niyang nahihirapan siya sa sobrang mahal ng bilihin? Terrorismo ba ang paglalahad ng katotohanan? Diktador lang ang takot sa katotohanan. Mister Speaker, dear colleagues, totoo ang kinakaharap ng problema ng manggagawa sa kasalukuyan. At bilang mga kinatuhan ng manggagawa at mamamayan, hindi pwedeng tumunganga na lang tayo habang naghihikahos ang ating mga kababayan. Suportahan natin ang panawagan nila para sa dagdag sahod at national minimum wage. Matagal na itong sinisigaw pero mas mali na ang pangangailangan ko ngayon para tugunan ang tumataas sa presyo ng mga batayang bilihin. Hindi na makatuwira nung sobrang mahal ng gasolina. Ang tauwayan ang mismo ang nananawagan na dapat i-exercise ang excise tax sa langis dahil sobrang-sobrang pahirap na ito. Hindi dapat nagdadalong isip sa pagbibigay ng ayuda. Kaya dapat natin aksyonan ang panawagan para sa daily wage subsidy, unemployment benefits, paid pandemic leave, at iba pa. Matagal na napatunayan na pahirap lang ang kontraktoisasyon sa manggagawa. Kaya suportahan din natin ang panawagan nila na ibasura ang kontraktoisasyon at tiyakin ang regular na trabaho para sa lahat ng manggagawa. Dapat pigilan na ang mga manananggal, ang mga manananggal ng karapatan sa regular na trabaho. Dapat ituring ang mga manggagawa na makabagong bayani dahil patuloy sila nag-aambag sa pagunlad na ekonomiya. Sa kabila ng kawalan ng supporta mula sa gobyerno. Ibigay natin ang nararapat sa kanila. Dapat nilang makuha ang katumbas ng pinaghirap, pinagpagura nila. I urge my fellow representatives and the House leadership to listen and act on the plight of the workers and end this horror story. Salamat po, Mister Speaker.
Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize Congresswoman Arlene Brosas for her interpretation? No move, Mister Speaker.
Honorable Arlene Brosas for her interpretation. Please proceed, madam.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, will our good sponsor yield to a few clarificatory questions, Mister Speaker?
Honorable Gaite.
Ah, pahintulutan ko po dahil kaba birthday lang po ng ating kagalang-galang na Arlene Brosas.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, Mister Sponsor. Mister Speaker, Mister Sponsor, unay na ang horror story ano 'yung sinabi ninyo sa kalabayan ng mga manggagawa na walang trabaho, napakarami talaga na nawalan ng trabaho, 'yung sitwasyon ng kanilang mga pamilya, kontraktoisasyon, at kung ano-ano pa. Pero, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, nais ko sanang magtanong kaugnay lamang doon sa usapin ang pasahod. Tungkol po ito, Mister Speaker, my dear colleague, Representative Gaite, para sa kaalaman ng mamamayang Pilipino, ano ba ang umiiral na sistema ng pasahod bago isabatas ang Wage Rationalization Act of Republic Act 6727? Iisa lang po ba ang minimum na sahod sa buong bansa o dati pang iba-iba ang minimum wage kada rehiyon?
Bago pinatupad ang Wage Rationalization Act sa ating kagalang-galang na interpreter, merong, sa isang antas ay merong national minimum wage na ipinatupad. Bagamat meron pa rin itong pagkakaiba pero mas mainam-inam na siya noon kesa sa ngayon. Dahil nga sa ilalim ng Wage Rationalization Act, sa bawat rehiyon ay iba-iba ang pasahod. Hindi pa tapos yan. Sa bawat rehiyon, depende kung agricultural or non-agricultural worker ay iba rin ang pasahod. Kung ang mga empleyado ay nasa isang antas na bilang, maaring exempted siya sa wage orders. Kayun din kung sila ay exempted, kung sila ay nandun sa ilalim ng bambilo na tinatawag, ito 'yung parang sa micro businesses na nasa antas barangay ay maari rin exempted. Kaya sa totoo lang, mas masahol 'yung sistema ngayon na nagtatakda ng, ang tawag nga namin ng manggagawa dito, regionalization ng wages.
Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, gaano ba ang pinagkaiba ng kilo ng bigas sa iba't-ibang rehiyon? Bakit? Bakit parang, di ba kung gusto talaga natin na tugunan 'yung pangangailangan ng mga manggagawa? Hindi ba kapagka magkakaiba ang kanilang sahod samantalang halos pareho na 50 pesos ang binabayad nila sa bigas? Kawawa naman 'yung ibang mga, ano, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor. Yun lang 'yung gusto kong sabihin, ano, ginong sponsor, na sa mga basic pabatayang pangangailangan ng ating mga mamamayan, hindi siya nagkakaiba-iba sa iba't-ibang rehiyon. Hindi naman mura, lalong-lalo na sa usapin ng pagkain. Lalong-lalo pa ngayon sa panahon ng pandemya at krisis, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor.
Mister Speaker, tama po yan, ano? Ang isang naging pamantayan o dahilan kung bakit naaprubahan 'yung Wage Rationalization Act ay itinakda ang pagkakaiba ng sahod kada lugar, kada rehiyon. Dahil sa paniniwalang magkakaiba ang cost of living sa bawat lugar. Pero tulad ng pinaliwanag ng ating kagalang-galang na tinatawa ng Gabriel Williams Party list kay Kong Arlene, kadalasan kesa hindi ay hindi naglalayo 'yung tinatawag na cost of living sa mga lugar. At hagap nabanggit niyang example ay bigas, ano? Malaking bahagi ng ating expenses o 'yung FIES ng isang pamilya, 'yung expenditure niya, malaking bahagi ay sa pagbili ng bigas dahil yun ang kagawian natin sa paraan ng ating pagkain. Kaya malaking bahagi ang food expense ay rice. Kaya tama 'yung observation na hindi malaking pagkakaiba. Pero gusto ko lang kung i-volunteer, 'yung ipapanggastusin ay actually minsan mas mataas pa sa rehiyon. Example, at nabanggit na 'yung gasolina, 'yung diesel, 'yung crudo. Alam naman natin na habang papalayo ito sa mga sentro na kung saan nilalagak o may refinery, ang mga oil companies ay nagmamahal siya, ano? Minsan 4, 5 piso mas mataas sa iba't-ibang rehiyon. Kaya bagamat totoo naman na may mas mababang mas mahal na mga halaga, example, presyo na lupa, real estate, probably 'yung ibang local produce, ano? Tulad ng mga gulay at iba pa, nag-iivan out. Kumbaga may mga bagay na mahal, may bagay na mura pero sa huling pangsusuri, ang cost of living ay hindi naglalayo kunyahan din sa mga sentro lugar tulad ng Metro Manila.
Thank you for confirming, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, ano? Sinabi niyo na rin kanina, sa totoo lang, mas mahal pa nga 'yung langis sa probinsya pero mas mababa ang antas ng pasahod. Kaya 'yan po 'yung ano eh, tanong natin eh, mas mababa ang antas ng pasahod. So, anyway, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, ibig sabihin din nito, sa matagal na panahon, kongreso ang nagtatakda ng umento sa minimum na sahod ng mga manggagawa. Inaaprubahan ito tulad ng ordinaryong batas, tama po ba, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor?
Pwede kung sa pag-usapan ay 'yung batas, 'yung Wage Rationalization Act, yun 'yung nagtatakda ng proseso o paraan. Pero essentially, ang nangyari na isinuko sa mga tinatawag na wage boards o 'yung regional tripartite wage boards na nasa ilalim ng National Wage and Productivity Commission ang tungkuling ito. Kaya't sa esensya, na desentralize o na-regionalize ang paraan ng pagtatakdaan ng sahod na sa totoo lang ay hindi naging epektibo para maabot 'yung nakalagay sa ating saligang batas na dapat ang sahod ay na-a approximate o di kayang katumbas nung family living wage. Sahod na kayang tugunan, hindi lamang 'yung pangangailangan ng manggagawa sa kanyang pang-araw-araw na pangangailangan, pagkain, transportasyon, at iba pa, kundi 'yung pangangailangan ng kanyang dum- pamilya. Samang edukasyon, pangkalusugan, at di konti para sa kanyang leisure. Dahil alam naman natin, sa panahon ngayon ng pandemya ay kailangan 'yung ating mental health, ano? Importante 'yan na kung konting makaliwaliw ka lang sa mga ilang lugar na may totoong may gastos, ay importante pa rin para sa kabuo ang mental health. Pero unfortunately, hindi natutugunan ang kasalukuyang sahod na itinatakdaan ng mga wage boards para maabot 'yung nakabuo ng sahod.
Yes, thank you, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, ano? Nasabot niyo naman po sa RA 6727, nag-iiba-iba ang antas ng pasahod kada rehiyon. Ngayon, 'yung tinayukong sinasabi ninyong regional tripartite wage boards, dapat may representante kaya nga po tripartite, di ba may representante ng gobyerno, negosyo, at mga manggagawa? Ngayon, lumalabas po sa record ang regional wage boards, nung ang napakabarat ng mga wage increase na inaprubahan ng mga ito. Magkano po ba ang pinakamalaking umento na nakalusot sa wage boards, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor?
Sige, bago ko sagutin yun, nakakalungkot dahil ang huli na increase ay sa isang wage order na nilabas ng isang regional wage boards ay 2020 pa, bago pumutok 'yung pandemya. And after that, wala na since 2020, papasok na tayo sa 2022. Despite 'yung provision ng batas ng NWPC na dapat every year ni-review motoproyo ng NWPC o kanilang wage boards, ang sahod, walang nangyari at ang nagamit na dahilan niya ay 'yung pandemya. But despite that, tulad na nabanggit na privilege beach sa mga ibang bansa, nagtaas pa rin sila dahil napita nga nila na kailangan 'yung pagtaas sahod dahil 'yung mamamayan, lalo na 'yung manggagawa, ang pinaka-pectado ng pandemya. Ang range ng increases, mas recent, ano, mga 2018, ay ang pinakamataas na 'yung 35 pesos, kagdapdak kamali sa podblierera ito. Pero ang normal na rate ay nasa 10 pesos pataas, ano, so ganyan lang 'yung rate. Sa Metro Manila, 2018, ang pinakuhuling increase ay umabot lamang ng 25 pesos.
So, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, sa ilalim ng rehming Duterte, ano? Ilang beses lang nagbigay ng umento sa mga manggagawa, pero po ba kayong datos nitong pagbibigay ng regional wage boards ng umento?
Oo, at nakuha nga natin datos ay dalawang beses lang ang umento na, ah, nung umupusi Pangulong Duterte nitong mga nakaraang taon, ano? Etong increases ay napakadalang, ano? Kaya't talagang hikahos ang kalagayan ng ating mga manggagawa dahil hindi na, habang mabilis ang pagtaas ng inflation, hindi naman nakaangkop 'yung increases. May increases pero hindi significant 'yung increase para mabawi kahit yun ang walang halaga buwan ng inflation. Kaya ang totoong halaga na sahod ng mga manggagawa hindi pataas. Pababa ng pababa na ito.
So, ibig sabihin, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, dalawang beses lang mula 2016, ano? Nagkaroon ng umento, ano, pangtaas na maliit lang, sabi niyo nga, 35 pesos, ano? 10 pesos, 'yan ang mga, ano, range ng pagtaas ng sahod na umento sa sahod ng mga manggagawa. Mula 2016, ibig sabihin po, after six years, ano, na wala talaga, ang halos na nakuha ang mga manggagawa natin. Anyway, Mister Speaker, ginong sponsor, ngayong nagluluwag naman na ang mga restriksyon. Unti-unting lumalabas na ang mga pamilyang Pilipino pero mahigpit na mahigpit pa rin ang kanilang singguron. Makakapasyal pero hanggang tingin-tingin lang kasi wala namang ibugunor, ano? Wala, wala pa ring laman ang bilsa ng mga manggagawa at kanilang pamilya. Kaya naman kami po, ano, ay sumu-supporta sa mga paano kala na kadyat naipasa ang paano kala ang umento sa sahod ng mga manggagawa. At gawing pamansang minimum wage ang 750 daily, ano mang rehiyon o industriya na... At gawing pambansang minimum wage ang 750 daily, ano mang rehiyon o industriya na naroon ka, na paano kala po ng bayan muna? Kapag itinaas ang araw ang sahod, tataas din ang benepisyon ng mga manggagawa, pakikinabang ang kanilang pamilya at makakaambag ito sa pagpapasigla sa mga maliliit na negosyo, na nilumpo ng pandemya. Kaya ah, ibaba ang presyo at ipatupad ang signif- significantong signifikante, significant na umento sa sahod ng mga manggagawa. 'Yan po ang pantingin natin kaugnay dyan. Kaya maraming-maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Sponsor, sa pagsagot sa mga ilang ah clarificatory questions mula sa representante ito. Thank you.
Maraming salamat din po at happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, would like to recognize Congressman Abdullah Dimaporo, the First District of Lanao del Norte, for his interpretation. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Dimaporo is recognized.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. Uh, I, I would like to ask the sponsor, um, Mr. Speaker, um, uh, that uh, he, I am sure that all of us know, that is, that what is happening to us here in the Philippines is happening to the entire world. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, and uh, uh, he made a statement earlier, that he seems to know the situation in the other countries, uh. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, uh, the Honorable Sponsor, uh, how bad is the Philippines compared to the other countries?
Um, sa ating kagalang-galang at kapit-kapitagang ah tinatawaan na Abdullah Dimaporo, ang ah, salamat po sa inyong pagtanong. Um, ayon sa ah ilang mga organizations ng trade unions, ah 'yung ITUC, sinabi na nga nila eh, isa na sa pinakamasahon na kalagayan para sa ating mga manggagawa ngayon, ang, ang manggagawang Pilipino. Dahil nga po, ah, so usapin ang sahod, karapatan, 'yung kontakto lisasyon, 'yung usapin sa, 'yung ito nga pong epekto ng pandemya, no? At ah mismo dito sa ILO studies nga, sinabi rin na baga matutoo, may crisis sa buong nahegig at tinikilala ng ILO ito, ah hindi sila napigilan na dahil meron silang mga paraano, sistema, para ma-insure na ang pag- ah umento sa mga manggagawa ay isang regular na aspeto ng kanilang patakaran. Unfortunately, unfortunately para sa atin, hindi ganun, no? Kaya nagulat nga rin 'yung ILO, na sinabi nilang, ah despite the pandemic, there were countries who meron silang scheduled na ah salary increases o wage increases, ah despite the crisis, ay ipinatupad pa rin. Pero tama naman rin, dahil nga sa epekto ng pandemya, 'yung iba ay humiling na ipaliban muna, o di kaya 'yung increase ay ah ah pinaliit na lang muna nila, in deference to the practices. Pero ah tulad nga ng usaping ito, ay talagang, ah tulad na nabanggit, importante na bigyan natin ng pakpahalaga, 'yung ating mga manggagawa, lalo na sa panahon ng pandemya.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the situation is all over the world. Uh, and uh, uh, ang uh, ang uh, other countries, there are many of them who are better, uh economically, financially than the Philippines. And they can uh, uh resolve to many ways of helping their people, as they have the money. In our case, we are even having problem uh buying uh the vaccine, uh, uh, to save the life of many of us. Uh, and uh, this is not being the purposely by our country. It is because of our situation. Uh, and uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, and Mr. Speaker, uh, the uh, uh, the situation also, uh, is something, uh, that uh, I believe, uh, many countries are having problems with, as we are here in the Philippines. And uh, in other countries, uh, they have thought of ways of resolving the problem. Uh, thinking of ways of resolving the problem is not up only to the president. It is also up to Congress, the House of Representatives and the Senate. Uh, and uh, we should be, if we are blaming someone, we should be blaming ourselves, because we have not found a way to resolve uh, uh, this problem. Uh, uh, kaya, uh, ang mga uh, tindahan ay nahihirapan dahil, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, lumiliit ang gubilin sa kanila, uh, dahil sa kulang sila ng pera, dahil hindi sila makapagtrabaho, uh, dahil pati 'yung tinatrabaho nila, naghihirap din, uh, at uh, mahirap kung ma-expose sila na ma-expose, dahil maraming mga matay uh sa ating uh, uh, bansa, uh, Mr. Speaker. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, uh, uh, I'd like, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, uh, that all of us think of ways how to resolve this. Not only the different departments or the government that should be doing it, but also we must be doing it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor.
Salamat po sa ating kagalang-galang na Congressman Dimaporo.
The Honorable Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, uh, I move that we refer the privileged speech and the interpretation to the Committee on Rules.
There's a motion to refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Guaidet to the Committee on Rules. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Eupemia Cafemia Coliamat from Party List Bayan Muna, for her, uh, privileged speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Representative Eupemia Coliamat of Party List Bayan Muna is recognized. Please proceed, Madam.
Maraming salamat, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Speaker, sorry. Um, una sa lahat, ah, kagalang-galang na speaker, sa ating mga kapwa mangbabatas, magandang hapon sa ating lahat. Ah, kagalang-galang na speaker, nung nakarang araw, November 6, nagmarcha ang maraming mamamayan sa buong mundo para makilahok sa tinaguri ang global climate strike. Sabay ng nag-anak sa kasalukuyan na pulo-pulong ng Conference of Paris or COP26, sa Glasgow, Scotland, nagrehistor ang mag 120,000 marches na mga panawagan ng mamamayan, para tugunan ang crisis sa klima. Sa Pilipinas, nakiisa ang mga environmentalista, mga aktibista, mga human rights defenders, mga tagapagpanggul ng kalikasan at iba pang ah sektor sa Pilipinas, para sa Global Day of Action for Climate Justice. Dahil ang Pilipinas ay bahagi at isa sa pinaka-epektado at bulnirobling bansa, sa epikong dulot ng climate change at injustisia sa mamamayan, sa usapin ng crisis sa kalikasan. Ginong speaker, pinag-uusapan sa buong mundo ang pagbago ng klima, na walang ibang nakikitang sanhi, kundi ang patuloy na pagkawasak sa ating inangkalikasan, pagwasak sa lalong ah, na lalong gumilis at sumidhi dahil sa aktibidad at pulisiyang gawa ng tao. Mr. Speaker, ang malalaking kapitalistang industriya ng karbon, langis at likas na gas, na mga pangunahing ding lumalabag sa karapatang pantao, para maigiit ang kanilang mga negosyo, ay nagdulot ng pinaka-pinakamatindi, pinakamatinding sanhi, kung bakit may kalamidad at nasisira ang kapaligiran. Kasali din dito sa pagkaubos ng ah fossil fuels, ang mga operasyon ng naglalakihan kompanya ng mina na nagwawasak sa ating mga kagubatan, ah kabundukan at lumalason sa ating mga katuligan. Ginong speaker, tama, tama ang sinabi ng ating mga ninono sa kanilang tradisyonal na payo, para sa maingat na paggamit ng likas yaman sa ating kapaligiran. Ito ay ang patuloy na ginagampal na naming mga pam- mga katutubo o pam- o pambansang minorya. Ilang pong dekada na kaming nananawagan sa aktibong pagdepensa sa aming lupang ninono, laban sa mga proyektong nakakasira sa inangkalikasan. Ginong speaker, kami mga katutubo ay naniniwala na ang pagkasira ng ating kapaligiran, ang siyang sanhi na, sanhi din ng pagbago ng klima sa kasalukuyan. Kailangan nating pinan at kilalanin na ang matinding pagkawasak ng ating kapaligiran, ay nagbibigay ng daan sa mga matitinding pagbaha, pagbuho sa lupa at mga sakuna, na kumikitil ng napakaraming buhay ng mga mahihirap na Pilipino. Ang mga katutubo, mga magsasaka, maralita sa kalungsuran at kanayunan, ang pumapasan sa pinakamatinding bigat ng presi sa klima sa ating mundo. Buhay. Sa atin, ang bilobyo ng Baguio, Ylanda na ngayon ay nasa ita- walong anniversary na. Maraming buhay at bilyong kabuhayan ang nawasak dito. Ginong speaker, mahalaga at makatulong sa pag-unlad ng produksyon ang sistemang kapital o kapitalismo. Ngunit kailangang may balanse ng pag-unlad, ng pag-unlad sa infrastruktura at agrikultura o paglikha ng pagkain. Kailangang makita natin lahat ang resulta ng relasyon ng tao at ng ating inangkalikasan. Batay sa aming karanasan, uh, Mr. Speaker, bilang mga katutubo, inaral namin ang ekonomiya na nakabatay sa sustinableng ah agrikultura. At napapatunayan namin na kaya nating paonlarin ang ating bayan na hindi natin sisirain ang ating kapaligiran. Hindi kailangang sagarin ang likas yaman para sa mabilisang pagkamal ng tubo. Ito ay dapat ah, naka- naka- nakabatay sa pangangailangan lamang lamang natin na mga tao. Ang katotohanan ito, Mr. Speaker, ay patuloy naming ah ipapahayag sa buong bansa, hangga't makarating sa larangan ng internasyal. Dahil alam namin na sa kalik- kalikasan naka- nakaugnay ang buhay sa lahat ng may buhay, lalo na ang tao. Kaya tungkuli natin lahat, nadipinsahan ang kalikasan upang makita natin ang mahigpit na relasyon ng tao at ng kalikasan. Ginong speaker, ang pagbago ng ating klima ay isang manipisto at paalaala sa atin, na hindi na kayang kontrolin ang paggalaw ng inangkalikasan. Kaya humingi na siya ng saklolo sa atin, na payo ay umaksyon at magkaisa, para ang problema ng pagbago ng klima ay maaristo agad. Kailangan nating matiyak ang mga makapaong solusyon sa climate injustice. Kailangan nating alagaan ang ating mundo para sa ating susunod na henerasyon. Kung natunghayan natin, ginong speaker, ang malaking protesta sa Glasgow nung Sabado, para sa climate justice, lutang na lutang na ang nangunguna dito ay ang mga kabataan, dahil sila, sila ang pangunahing maipipuhan sa kapabayaan ng ibat-ibang bansa, at sa mga leader nito sa ating kalikasan. Paano na ang mga kabataan at susunod na henerasyon natin kung wasak na wasak ang ating kalikasan? Kaya, ginong speaker, sa aming panindigan bilang katutubo, mahigpit naming dinipinsahan ang ating aming lupang ninono. Pangangalagaan ang lahat ng may buhay sa ibabaw nito. Linangin ang res- responsable ang lahat ng mga rekorso ngandito, at nanawagan may galang ang aming karapatan sa sariling pagpapasya. Napakaluma ng mga sagot at mga paraan sa kasalukuyang administrasyon. Ay tuturing kaming kriminal sa sariling bayan at paparusahan sa pagyura sa aming karapatan. Kami ang pangunahing nangangalaga sa likas yaman at patrimonya ng bansa. Kami ay magpapatuloy dahil ang karapatan na aming pinaglalaban ay karapatan ng bawat Pilipino, na may pagmamahal sa ating sariling bayan. Justisia ang ating panawagan sa lahat ng pinaslang na environmental defenders, kabilang ang mga katutubo, mga magsasaka, mangingisda at iba pang aktibistang lumalaban, sa mga malalaking minahan at dam na sumisira sa ating inangkalikasan. Kaya man, kaya naman, ginong speaker, sa puntong ito, hindi kami magdadalawang isip, na humihingi sa publiko na suportahan ang laban ng mga pambansang minorya, para sa dipinsahan ang ating ah inangkalikasan dahil dito nakasalagay ang buhay nating lahat. At ah, ito lamang po, ginong speaker, maraming salamat at magandang hapon ulit sa ating lahat.
The Honorable Floor Leader, Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move the privileged speech of Honorable Eupemia Coliamat be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Edgar M. Chato of the First District of Bohol for his privileged speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Representative Edgar M. Chato from the First District of Bohol is recognized. Please proceed, Your Honor. Technical stuff, are we ready? Suspended? Ah, question suspended? There you go. Ready? Question is resumed. The Honorable Chato of the First District of Bohol is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, our guests, good afternoon. The 26th Climate Change Conference of the Parties for COP26, which has kicked off on the 31st of October, will end on the 12th of November. It is being held in Glasgow, in United Kingdom, and is attended by world leaders, ministers, negotiators, representatives from civil society, business, international organizations, and the media. COP26 was originally scheduled to take place in November 2020 in Glasgow, but was postponed by one year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The COP is hosted by a different country each year, and the first such meeting was COP1, which took place in Berlin, Germany in 1995. During the COP21 in Paris in 2015, almost all countries in the world signed an international treaty called the Paris Agreement. The treaty's aims are to keep the rise in global average temperature to well below 2 degrees above pre-industrial levels. Ideally, at 1.5 degrees, strengthen the ability to adapt to climate change and build resilience, and align all finance flows with a pathway towards low greenhouse gas emission and climate resilient development. The Paris Agreement adopted a bottom-up approach by allowing countries to decide by themselves how much they will reduce their emissions by a certain year. And the signatory countries communicate these targets to the United Nations Framework Convention to the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, UNFCCC, through the Nationally Determined Contributions, or NDCs. Collectively, the NDCs submitted in twenty fifteen were not ambitious enough to limit global warming to well below two degrees. However, the signet of the Paris Agreement are expected to submit new and more ambitious NDCs every five years, which fell on the thirty-first of December twenty twenty, the Philippines' first NDCC in April twenty twenty-one, after the House of Representatives adopted two house resolutions urging the submission of the NDC Climate Change Commission. Recently, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPCC, came out with the sixth assessment report, or AR six, that the UN Secretary-General Antonio Guterres described as code red for humanity. Meaning, the world is dangerously close to irreversible global warming due to human activity. However, AR six also addresses that it is still possible to achieve the one-point-five-degree target if unprecedented action is taken now. Thus, COP twenty-six is a critical summit for global climate action. But to have a chance at limiting global warming to one-point-five degrees, global emissions must be cut by half in twenty thirty and reach net zero by twenty fifty. Hence, the first goal of COP twenty-six is to secure global net zero by mid-century and keep one-point-five degrees within reach. To achieve this, countries are expected to come forward with ambitious twenty thirty emissions reduction targets that align with the achieving net zero by twenty fifty. In order to deliver on these targets, party countries will need to accelerate the phase-out of coal, curtail the development, the forestation, spread up the switch to electronic vehicles, and encourage investment in renewables. The second goal of COP twenty-six is for countries to adapt to protect communities and natural habitats. Since the climate is already changing with devastating effects and will continue to change even as we reduce emissions, at COP twenty-six, we are called to work together to enable and encourage countries affected by climate change to protect and restore ecosystems and build defenses, warning system, and resilient infrastructure and agriculture to avoid loss of homes, livelihoods, and even lives. The third goal of COP twenty-six is to mobilize finance. In order to deliver on the first two goals, developed countries must make good on their promise to mobilize at least one hundred billion US dollars in climate finance per year by twenty twenty. Hence, international financial institutions are called to play their role and their part as all party countries are called to work towards unleashing the trillions in private and public finance required to secure global net zero. The fourth and final goal of COP twenty-six calls on all of us to work together to deliver because we can only rise to the challenges of the climate crisis by working together. At COP twenty-six, all the members are called to finalize the Paris rulebook, which is the detailed rule that make the Paris Agreement operational and accelerate action to tackle the climate crisis through collaboration and action between governments, business, and the civil society organization. Here in the Philippines, an average of twenty typhoons visit the country every year. But in the last quarter of twenty twenty alone, seven typhoon and a super typhoon wrecked havoc to some areas of the country, causing millions in damage. During the meeting of the Committee on Climate Change in September this year, Dr. Marcelino Vila Ferte of the Philippine Atmospheric, Geophysical, and Astronomical Services Administration stated that warming of the air temperature has been observed in the Philippines at the rate of one degree per decade from nineteen fifty-one to two thousand fifteen. He further stated that there is an increasing and decreasing trend of annual rainfall in various areas of the country and that nighttime temperatures are increasing more than the daytime temperatures. In addition, he said that the intensity of tropical cyclones has increased particularly from two thousand one to two thousand fifteen, which are within the very strong categories and that atmospheric warming is also projected to continue in the future during the hotter months of March, April, and May. He mentioned that the projected changes in rainfall extremes in the Philippines will be increased in maximum of one rainfall per day in many areas of the zone and in some areas, some parts of Mindanao towards the twenty-first century. He then addressed that as early as two thousand eleven, there is already a need to prepare for extreme events, drier future that will lead to droughts and more intense tropical cyclones with damaging effect. President Rodrigo Roa Duterte, speaking at the seventy-fifth UN General Assembly, stated that "The climate vulnerability of my country, the Philippines, an archipelagic state with a coastline of thirty-six thousand kilometers, situated along the typhoon belt of the Pacific, is undeniable. Our people battered and bruised by brutal typhoon, they come our way every year, year also for climate justice. We aim for climate justice and we fight for climate justice." Homes leveled, people drowned, lands forsaken, livelihood painfully lost. This is not a way to live. But for Filipino families visited by at least twenty typhoons a year, as a matter of course, this has become a lesser life lived. He was rightfully indignant when he said that. The greatest injustice here is that those who suffer the most are those the least responsible for this existential crisis. But here, we are now at a critical tipping point where failure to act leads to capitalistic consequences for the whole of humanity. Developed countries must fulfill their longstanding commitment to climate financing, technology transfer, and capacity building in the developing world. This moral obligation that cannot be avoided. Before the world tilts towards the irreparable damage, our delegation hopes to get the parts, rulebook, the Paris rulebook rather, done which is in harmony with the goal of the COP twenty-six. This is particularly important to the Philippines. The finalization of the rules for Article Six of the UN Framework Convention on Climate Change, which involve modalities and procedures for implementing cooperative approaches between developed and developing countries. Further, our delegates need to ensure that developed countries will finally move the urgency to deliver on their commitments in the terms of the Paris Agreement's means of implementation, that is through climatic finance, technology transfer, capacity building from developed countries to the developing ones. Without this, our country will not be able to develop the capacity and technical know-how that we need to avoid greenhouse gas emissions and we will not be able to survive the worsening impact of climate change. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, as we eagerly await the outcome of COP twenty-six in Glasgow, we must continue our work in passing relevant laws that contribute to the achievement of global net zero by twenty fifty so that we can stop the irreversible damage that a two-degree rise in global temperature can do to the planet we all call home. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues.
Thank you, the honorable Chato. What is the pleasure of the honorable Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of Honorable Edgar Chato to the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Please proceed, the honorable floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour for another ten minutes. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to extend the privilege hour for another ten minutes. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Kong Representative Sarah Elago from the Kabataan Party List for privileged speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The honorable Sarah Elago is recognized for her privileged speech. Please proceed, your honor.
Maraming salamat, ginong speaker. Bago ang lahat, anais kung batie na ang ating mga kasamahan dito sa kongreso na nagbigay, nagpahayaga ng kanilang mahigpit at malakas na pakikiisa sa nagaganap na panawagan, malawakang panawagan, hindi lang dito sa Pilipinas, kundi sa buong mundo, upang magkaroon na ng mga kagyap na aksyon, mga pagbabago sa mga patakaran, mga polisiya, sa mga kinakailangan na hakbang upang matugunan ang kasalukuyang planetary emergency at ang panawagan para sa kagyap na climate action at justisyang pangklima dito sa ating bansa. Ang Pilipinas ang isa po sa pinakavulnerable, ang pinakaapektado ng climate crisis sa buong mundo. Ngunit tayo rin po, isa dun sa may pinakamaliit na contribution dun sa CO2 emissions. Pero damangdama po natin yan sa sunod-sunod na mga extreme weather events na naranasan ng Pilipinas dito sa mga malalakas na bagyo, lindol, at marami pang iba. Talagang ang nakakaranas ng napakatinding amhirap ang ating mga kababayan dahil dito. Kaya po mananawagan tayo, nanaway hindi manatili dun sa mga papel, sa mga manifesto, 'yung mga commitment ng ating mga leaders, kundi makita talaga natin yan sa mga pagbabago sa ating mga kasalukuyang patakaran at legislation na may kinalaman sa call, sa haze, sa air, dito po sa ating bansa. Ngayon, ginong speaker, ang representasyong ito mula sa Kabataan ay tumiddig upang magbigay po ng pinakahuling ulat, hingal sa muling pagbubukas ng mga paaralan. Gayun din ang kampanya upang protektahan ang mga libraries on the safe reopening of schools and the call to protect our libraries campaign. Greetings of solidarity from Kabataan Party List. The COVID-nineteen public health emergency has worsened the pre-pandemic education situation in the Philippines. Schools have remained closed since the government declared a nationwide lockdown in March twenty twenty. The abrupt shift to remote learning and teaching has magnified the income and digital divide among students, teachers, and all other stakeholders, thereby making quality education largely inaccessible amid the pandemic. The prolonged school closures and never-ending lockdowns have affected not just learning and teaching, it has also taken a toll on our mental health and the total well-being. Not everyone has conducive learning, teaching, and working spaces at home. Children have suffered immensely from learning loss. Clearly, we are facing a major learning crisis as much as we are in a major health crisis. Based on World Bank and the Asian Development Bank reports, the estimated cost of school closure and learning loss due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic is about sixteen-point loss in terms of PISA scores and up to ten trillion US dollars learning loss or two-point-three percent in lifetime learning of current students. In the Philippines, school closures cost up to one-point-nine trillion pesos or ten percent reduction in real GDP based on twenty nineteen figures. Further, Mr. Speaker, UNICEF and UNESCO in September twenty twenty-one reported that the Philippines was one of the last two countries in the world with schools fully closed since the World Health Organization declared COVID-nineteen a pandemic in March twenty twenty. The other country, Venezuela, already opened their schools, which catered to about eleven million students last month, October twenty twenty-one. Meanwhile, the Department of Education here in the Philippines is gearing for the pilot implementation of face-to-face classes in only one-hundred-and-twenty schools, ninety-five public elementary, five public senior high schools, and twenty private schools on November fifteen. Napakaliit lang po nito na kumpara dun sa kabua nga nasa forty-eight thousand na bilang na mga public elementary and basic education schools sa buong bansa. This situation is far from what is imperative of the state to perform its obligation to protect and promote the right of all citizens to quality education at all levels and take appropriate steps to make such education accessible to all. We in Kabataan hope that you can stand with us in solidarity in pushing for proactive and effective measures for an expedient and wider rollout of the safe reopening of schools, including the provision of a framework and funding for the safe and face reopening of schools beginning from low-risk areas. Students and stakeholders have long been pushing for ligtas na balik eskwela, safe and face reopening of schools, limited face-to-face classes, ten-thousand student aid, education aid, as well as the hashtag walang iwanan, inclusive mechanisms to leave no student behind. We hope that you all can join us, can join this representation along with the Rise for Education Alliance, Student Aid Network, and various sectors of society, and calling on the whole of eighteenth Congress to allocate sufficient budget to address these demands for much-needed, long-overdue ayuda or relief measures. While this representation continues to push for substantial public financing for the strengthening of our healthcare system, expanding our public health service capacities, ensuring expedient and transparent vaccination, mass testing, aggressive contact tracing, among other scientific and medical solutions which must be at the helm of COVID-nineteen pandemic response, we in Kabataan believe that we must put forward and fund no less for the safe and face school reopening. This youth representation believes that the needed funding is not only necessary but well within our means. If only the current administration is willing to forego dubious allocations in the billions for confidential and intelligence funds and other lump sums which are very prone to misuse and abuse. Together, we must firmly assert that the education of the present and the next generation deserves more attention and much better policy and funding support. Above and beyond all, the voices of teachers and students must be included in all levels of education-related pandemic response and recovery. Meaningful participation of teachers and students must be at the heart of policy and decision-making to enable the crafting and implementation of inclusive and responsive measures in education. There must be safe, protected, democratic spaces for them to directly engage government and school officials. to directly engage government and school officials and participate in public processes affecting them. To foster leadership among stakeholders and society, academic freedom must be promoted and protected. We must stand united with students, teachers, and academic community in amplifying calls to investigate and stop all reported attempts to trample fundamental freedoms in campuses and to continue to defend academic freedom and uphold the autonomy of our institutions of learning. Recent cases of book banning and library censorship in the Philippines threaten the very essence of academic freedom and the exercise of all human rights and fundamental freedoms. We sound the alarm on the removal of the so-called "subversive" books as labeled by the Red Tiger NTFLCAC from libraries of Kalinga State University, Isabela State University, and Aklan State University and the subsequent memorandum released by the Commission on Higher Education in the Cordillera Administrative Region on the same. This is an outright interference of the NTFLCAC on the affairs of our educational institution. Ilan po Kinoong Speaker sa mga grupo ng mga educators at librarians ang nagsalita na hangil dito. Tsang ayon sa ugnayan ng mga makabayang guro sa atinayyo sa kanilang opesyal na pahayag na nilabas noong November 5. Sinabi po nila, kailanman hindi dapat mangibabaw ang pambabraso ng estado sa kung papaano kumikilos ang iba't-ibang taong gumubuo sa ating mga paaralan. Mula sa mga guro, librarian, kawanee, hanggang sa mga mag-aaral. Dagdag pa rito, hindi dapat gamiting palusot ang kalayaang pangakademiko para sabihing karapatan din ng mga administrador, ng mga pamantasan, at ahensya ng pamahalaan na gawin ang nais nilang gawin. Isa itong pambababoy sa diwa ng orihinal na konsepto. Ginagarantiyan ng kalayaang pangakademiko ang karapatan ng mga nasa institusyon pang-edukasyon na magsaliksik, magsulat, magturo, at magpahayag tungkol sa mga paksa maaring tumataliwa sa ideya ng mga nakaoupo sa pamahalaan. Hindi dapat mangamba para sa kanilang mga buhay ang mga guro, librarian, kawanee, at mag-aaral dahil lamang sa pag-aaral o paniniwala sa mga ganitong kaisipan. Ang pagbabansag ng NTFLCAC at militar sa mga tinukoy nilang libro bilang subersibo ay malinaw na paglabag sa kalayaang ito. Mister Speaker, in another statement from the Congress of Teachers, Educators for Nationalism and Democracy, or CONTEND, as they denounce Ted Chairman Pope de Vera's justification for the removal of reading materials from the libraries of state universities and colleges, and I quote, "De Vera claims that universities acted on the principle of academic freedom, conveniently forgetting that academic freedom is based on the free and fair exchange of ideas and not on their censorship. The purging of books from public libraries is one of the severest forms of censorship, and De Vera's statement effectively sanctions it. Ted and De Vera must stop misrepresenting academic freedom." CONTEND also called on all students, educators, and members of the educational sector to hold Ted and other educational institutions accountable when they enable censorship and academic repression. Mister Speaker, we support these demands and stand in solidarity with the educators and teachers who have spoken against book banning and library censorship. As repeatedly said time and time again, worldwide, in past book purging and burning incidents and defunding of public libraries, an attack on the library is an attack on the community. This matter is both timely and relevant as we also observe the Library and Information Studies Month this November. Pagpupugay sa lahat ng ating mga kawanee, librarians, educators sa kanilang buong husay at pagsisikap sa pagtataguyod ng karapatan sa edukasyon sa kabila ng mga hamon ng kasalukuyang panahon. Tauspusong pasasalamat sa lahat ng mga aral gabay at inspirasyon na pagtibayan ang ating diwang makabayan. Patuloy nalakikiisa at kasama niyo ang mga Kabataan at estudyante sa paglaban para sa tamang kompensasyon, benepisyo, karapatan, at kapakanan. Mabuhay po kayo. Mister Speaker, I would like to end this speech with an excerpt from the official statement of the UP System Library Council, which strongly opposes the removal and banning of books and materials in the Cordillera Administrative Region and anywhere else in the country. And I quote, "Book purges are practiced by dictatorships, not democracies." And inevitably, book purges prove futile as those who banned the gnoli and the filly for being subversive eventually realize. Knowledge advances not by the exclusion of ideas, but by intellectual inquiry and scientific practice. Insurgencies are contained by addressing their root causes, not by banning books that explain how and why they happen." End of quote. Samasama po nating palakasin ang mabuting pamumuno at makabuluhan na representasyon sa sektor ng edukasyon at sa ating lipunan. Magkaisa tayo sa pagtataguyod ng karapatan sa edukasyon. We can make it. Kinakailangan po at nananawagan tayo na ang mga panokala at ang kalumpate na ito ay agara na na madinig sa atin pong mga relevant committees upang matalakay ang mga kinakailangan na mga update at paghanda sa safe reopening of schools. Gayun din ang kampanya bilang suporta sa hashtag #ProtectOurLibraries, hashtag #DefendAcademicFreedomCampaign. Maraming salamat, Kinoong Speaker.
The Honorable Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Congresswoman Sarah Ilago to the Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to refer the speech of the Honorable Ilago to the appropriate committee. Is there any objection?
Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, please proceed. What is the...
I would like to say manifestation to the speech of Representative Ilago, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, Congresswoman Franz Castro has a manifestation. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized. Please proceed, Madam.
Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker. Ang kinatawang pong ito ay sumusuporta at mabati sa ating kinatawang Representative, kinatawang Sarah Ilago sa kanyang speech, lalong-lalo na po 'yung kaugnay doon sa safe reopening of classes. Ang kinatawang din po ito ay naniniwala na talagang mahaba na masyado ang sakritisyo na ginagawa ng ating mga estudyante, teachers, at magulang sa nangyayaring blended learning or wala pa pong face-to-face classes sa ating mga paaralan. As the pilot test run for face-to-face classes draws near, the Department of Education should also ramp up its preparation of all schools for face-to-face classes. It should not rely on its conservative plans for school reopening and most especially, importantly, it should not leave the responsibility of preparing the schools to the teachers alone. Mister Speaker, naintindihan natin na marami sa mga magulang ang nag-aalangan pa rin na papasukin ang kanilang mga anak sa face-to-face classes. Resulta ito ng kakulangan na paghanda ng ating gobyerno na bigyang sapat na solusyon ang pandemya at lubusang paghandaan ang muling pagbubukas ng paaralan. Gaya po na nasabi ay, tanging Pilipinas na lamang ang nananatiling sarado ang paaralan sa buong mundo. Tinasabi ng DEP Ed na hindi pwedeng ikumpara sa ibang bansa ang sitwasyon na sistema ng edukasyon. Gumagawa lamang ito ng palusot kung bakit hindi rin magawang ligtas na bugsan ang mga paaralan sa ating mga bansa. Wala kasing ginawa ang DEP Ed na sapat na hakbang para sa ligtas na makapagbukas ang mga paaralan. Minumungkahe po ng kinatawang ito, Mister Speaker, na magkaroon. Sa una, ensure that the classrooms have better ventilation, air filtration, washing, and sanitation facilities. Second, ramp up vaccination programs. Third, provide weekly testing for teachers and education support personnel who will participate in the face-to-face classes. Number four, mass hiring of school nurses. And number five, provide a medical fund for treatment of those who will get infected of COVID-nineteen. Kaya, minumungkahe din po na sana let us not waste any more resources with barriers and never-ending lockdowns of our schools by making sure that DEP Ed's guidelines and protocols are sufficient in ensuring the safety and health of our teachers and students so that the nation's confidence in reopening of the schools will boost. So ito po, Mister Speaker, ang aking maikling manifestation na kaugnay doon sa speech ng ating kinatawan Sarah Ilago. Maraming pong salamat.
The Honorable Majority Leader. There was a pending motion earlier to refer the speech of the Honorable Ilago. We request the Majority Leader to please read the...
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech and the manifestations of Honorable Sarah Ilago and Franz Castro respectively to Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to refer the speech and manifestation to the appropriate committee. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. What is the pleasure of the Honorable Majority Leader?
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I move that we approve Journal number seven dated September 20 to 24, 2021.
There is a motion to approve Journal number seven dated September 20 to 24, 2021. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve Journal number eight dated September 27 to 30, 2021.
Is there any objection?
Objection.
The Chair hears none.
Mister Speaker.
The motion to approve Journal number eight of Monday of September 27 to 30 to 21 is approved.
Mister Speaker, Representative Sarah Ilago would like to make a manifestation regarding Journal number eight. I move that she be recognized.
The Honorable Sarah Ilago is recognized?
Yes, Mister Speaker. This is not a simple manifestation, but an objection to the approval of the journal since our objection with regard to the motion on the reconsideration of plenary action on House Bill number 10171 was not reflected in this journal. Mister Speaker, if I may further explain the objection of this representation. This youth rep along with six of our colleagues has addressed the Speaker on November 4, 2021 regarding...
The Honorable Ilago has five minutes to explain her vote.
Alright, thank you, Mister Speaker. With regard to page 112, page 112 of Journal eight, on the reconsideration of plenary action on House Bill number 10171, this youth representation with our colleagues who are authors of House Bill number 171 has sent a letter addressed to the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Copy in was the Office of the Secretary General, and I'd like to read for the record. "We, the undersigned authors of House Bill number 10171, manifest our opposition to the reconsideration of House Bill 10171. The House of Representatives passed HB 10171 on third and final reading on September 21 with a vote of 179 yes votes, 0 no, and 0 abstained, and transmitted to the Senate on September 2020. On September 22, a third reading copy of the said bill was likewise uploaded to the Congress website. We have welcomed the passage of this urgent and necessary measure as it upholds the historic UPD and the Accord being instrumental in safeguarding academic freedom and democratic rights in our national university. Reconsideration of HB 10171 was moved on September 30. And according to the rules of the Eighteenth Congress on Reconsideration, Section 106 on Reconsideration, and I'd like to read this for the record, Mister Speaker. When a measure, report, or motion is approved, adopted, or lost, a member who voted with the majority may move for its reconsideration on the same or succeeding session day. Only one motion for reconsideration shall be allowed. The motion for reconsideration shall take precedence over all other questions except a motion to adjourn a point of order, a question of privilege, and a motion to declare a recess. A bill, resolution, memorial, or petition recommitted to a committee or order to be printed shall not be brought back to the House on a motion to reconsider." Mister Speaker, five session days had already passed since the deadline on September 22, thereby making the reconsideration invalid. Thus, we would like to put this manifestation on record in the Journal for September 30 and request that the move for reconsideration of House Bill 10171 be declared null and void. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Majority Leader on the manifestation of the Honorable Sarah Ilago?
Mister Speaker, our parliamentary status is that the Honorable Sarah Ilago has raised an objection to the motion of our Majority Leader for the approval of the Journal. Mister Speaker, now I move, on behalf of the majority, I enjoin your nay votes. A nay vote defeats the objection and an aye vote sustains the objection. May we divide the House, Mister Speaker?
There is a motion to divide the House.
All those in favor.
Are as many as are in favor, please say aye. As many as are against, say nay.
Nay!
The nays have it. The motion to object is defeated.
Mister Speaker, at this juncture, I move that we begin consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10290. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the... Before we proceed, there is a correction. May we request the... Session is suspended.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, proceed.
Mister Speaker, I amend my motion. This is an omnibus motion for the approval on third meeting of the cluster called National High Schools and Elementary Schools. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Bill 10290, 10291, 10292, and 10293, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting for the cluster of House Bills under National High Schools and Elementary Schools. Thank you. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of House Bills 10290, 10291, 10292, 10293, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. Please proceed.
For approval on third reading, House Bill Number One Zero Two Nine Zero, An Act Separating the Dulop National High School, Bagong Valencia Extension in Barangay Bagong Valencia, Municipality of Dumingag, Province of Zamwangga Dal Sur from the Dulop National High School, converting it into an independent national high school to be known as the Bagong Valencia Agricultural National High School, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number One Zero Two Nine One, An Act Converting the Kinangan Elementary School in Barangay Kinangan Municipality of Malita, Province of Davao Occidental into an integrated school to be known as Kinangan Integrated School, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number One Zero Two Nine Two, An Act Converting the Maul Maul Elementary School in Barangay Maul Maul, Municipality of Jose Abad Santos, Province of Davao Occidental, into an integrated school to be known as the Mariano Anoy Sangay Integrated School, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number One Zero Two Nine Three, An Act Separating the Datu Danwata Elementary School Agikik Extension in Barangay Datu Danwata Municipality of Malita, Province of Davao Occidental from the Datu Danwata Elementary School, converting it into an independent elementary school to be known as the Agikik Elementary School, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members, honorables. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegzaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Cas, Castro Fredinil, Kaitano Alan, Kaitano Laarni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Kohuangko, Juliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Juliamat, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Losa Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzago, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Wiko, Ulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Nagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Leotchon, Legarda, Dim, Linkay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Ouaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulog, Sebeliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sing Suwat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasyo, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alaisa Shina, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharian, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Allen, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umale Alfonso, Umale Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yap Victor, Yap Eric, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers One Zero Two Nine Zero, One Zero Two Nine One, One Zero Two Nine Two, One Zero Two Nine Three. Honorable Representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragones, Umentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Kanama, Cardema, Celeste, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika, Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Kohuangko, Crisologo, Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Enverga, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Rudis, Si Sar, Fernandez, Fernando, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Goed Christopher, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Wiko, Ulyas, Jaresco, Hataman, Halosos, Jimenez, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Leotchon, Makapagal Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Ouaminal, Ordanes, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda Rivera Romero, Uh, Roman, Roque, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tiyango, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Allen, Unavia, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiarasa Suarez, Villarica, Yap Victor.
With one hundred eighty-two members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bills Numbers One Oh Two Nine Zero, One Oh Two Nine One, One Oh Two Nine Two, and One Oh Two Nine Three are hereby approved on third and final reading. Correction, uh, the number of votes voting in the affirmative is one hundred eighty-two members voting. One eighty-four. One eight-four members voting in the affirmative instead of one hundred eighty-two. Said, the House Bills, as mentioned, are hereby approved on third and final reading. Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, for the cluster of local bills under other local bills, I move for the consideration of House Bill Two Zero Zero Zero, and could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting?
Since there is no objection, the Secretary General is requested to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. Please proceed.
House Bill Two Zero Zero Zero, An Act Declaring Certain Portions of the Welfareville Property Located in the City of Mandaluyong Open for Disposition to Bonafide Residents Without Public Leading and for Other Purposes. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number Two Zero 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 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegzaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kaitano Alan, Kaitano Laarni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Kohuangko, Juliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Juliamat, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Losa Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garcia Janet, Gar, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Wiko, Ulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Nagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Leotchon, Legaral, Legarda, Lim, Linkay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariano, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Da, Nava, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Ouaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulog, Sebeliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sing Suwat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasyo, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alaisa Shina, Tan Angelica, Tan Samir, Tan Sharian, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tevez Arnolfo, Terne, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Allen, Ti Diego, Umale Alfonso, Umale Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Edgado, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration of House Bill Two Zero 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 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragones, Umentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Bilion, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Cardema, Celeste, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika, Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Kohuangko, Crisologo, Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Enverga, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Estrella, Farinyas Rudis, Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Goed Christopher, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Ulyas, Jaresco, Hataman, Halosos, Jimenez, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Konghun, Leotchon, Makapagal Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles, Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyaon, Ouaminal, Ordanes, Uan, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tiyango, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Allen, Unavia, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villanueva, Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Yap Zubiri.
With one hundred and eighty-six members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Number, House Bill Number Two Zero 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 is hereby approved on third and final reading. May we call the Honorable Zarate to please explain his vote.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, maraming salamat pagodang hapon po, Mr. Chair. Ang, may I proceed, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, maraming salamat, Mr. Chair. Ang ginatawang ito ay bumuboto ng yes sa panukalang batas, House Bill Number Two Thousand, uh, with, uh, a few reservations. Uh, Mr. Chair, matagal na pong gusto ng mga naninirahan sa Welfare Bill, uh, Welfare Bill na masapa sa kanila ang lupang kinatitirikan ng kanilang mga, uh, bahay para rin mabigyan ng kasiguruan ang kanilang hindi lang ano buhay, kundi ang kasiguruan nila sa pabahay. Uh, ang gusto lang nating mangyari, Mr. Chair, kung may, sa batas na ang panukalang batas, House Bill Number Two Thousand, nawagsan ang ilimita, 'yung mga makikinabang, uh, ng mga benifisyario rito. Uh, ang gusto nating mangyari, ang lahat ng mga, uh, naninirahan ngayon na nakatira sa usaping lupa, uh, na, na subject nitong ating panukalang batas, ay big, mabigyan ng pagkakataon na magawing pormal ang kanilang pagmamayari doon sa mga lupang kinatitirikan ng kanilang bahay. Uh, pangalawa, Mr. Chair, sa ating ni-rerestong reservasyon, ay, uh, sa identification ng mga benifisyaries, sana ay mabigyan ng pagkakataon ang mga lihimong local organizations, no, ng mga, uh, naninirahan ngayon dyan sa Welfare Bill, na magkaroon sila ng partisipasyon doon sa determination kung sino ang totoo at lihimong mga naninirahan dyan at mangiging benifisyario, at hindi, uh, na naman ito maging pagkakataon sa mga iilang tiwaleng mga, uh, personalidad, no, na, uh, pagsasamantalahan, no, na dahil ibubukas na ito, uh, sa pagmamayari ng mga pribadong, uh, mga individual, ay mapunta na naman ito, hindi sa mga legitimate, uh, uh, benifisyaries or mga nakatira ngayon dyan sa Welfare Bill, kundi, uh, baka magbibigay puwang na naman ito uh, para pasukin ang ilang mga pribadong sektor. So yun lang po ang ating gustong maiparihistro, uh, sa pagboto natin ng yes dito sa panukalang House Bill Number Two Thousand, at sana nga ay, uh, maging isang batas ito para mabigyan na ng katuparan ang matagal ng uh, nilanais at pinapangarap ng mga naninirahan sa lugar na yan na mga magiging pagmamayari na nila ang kinatitirikan ng kanilang mga pamamahay. Maraming salamat, Mr. Chair.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Majority Floor Leader?
Speaker, I know move that we consider on third reading, House Bill Number One Zero Two Eight Zero, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Since there is no objection to the motion, the Secretary General is directed to name the, to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number One Zero Two Eight Zero, An Act Renaming the Tambakan Bridge Traversing the Iligan River Located in Barangay Tambakan In the City of Iligan in the Northern Mindanao Region as the Mariano Luch Badelia Senior Bridge. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number One Zero Two Eight Zero. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegzaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondoc, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Cabatbat, Cabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan, Cayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Culiantes, Crisologo, Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Naguok, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De los Santos, De losso, Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudis, Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Briseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Areresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera de Hofer, Halusso Javier Jiménez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Leachon, Legarda, Lim, Linkaychon, López, Loyola, Usotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Nagaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jeriko, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco Núñez Malaniaon, Oaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez, Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualde Sierra, Romaldo Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Rektos, Hermientos, Saulog, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Singsuat, Singestrelita, Singoracio, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Sheena, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharian, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Victoria, Unabia Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villafuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa, Suárez, Villarica, Villalago, Yap Eric, Yap Victorio, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10280. Abante, Abelia Nosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragonés, Aumentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Cardema, Celeste, Tungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Crisologo, Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Enverga, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Rudis, Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Areresco, Hataman, Halusso, Siménez, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Leachon, Makapagal Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco Núñez Malaniaon, Oaminal, Ordanes, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tiyango, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Unabia, Ui Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villarasa, Suárez, Villarica, Yap Victorio.
With one hundred eighty-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 10280 is hereby approved on third and final reading. The Honorable Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number 10283 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and call the roll for nominal voting.
There is a motion and since there is no objection, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number 10283, an act converting the Northern Negro State College of Science and Technology in Sagai City, province of Negroes Occidental into a state university to be known as the State University of Northern Negroes and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10283. Abante Abaya, Abelia Nosa, Abu, Abwekzaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hennaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas, Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondoc, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Cabatbat, Cabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan, Cayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalauco, Angelica Co, Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Culiantes, Crisologo, Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Naguok, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De los Santos, De losso, Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudis, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Briseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Areresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera de Hofer, Halusso Javier Jiménez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Leachon, Legarda, Lim, Linkaychon, López, Loyola, Usotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Nagaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jeriko, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco Núñez Malaniaon, Oaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez, Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualde Sierra, Romaldo Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador, Tambunting, Sanchez, Angkopan, Santos Rektos, Hermientos, Saulog, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Singsuat, Singestrelita, Singoracio, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelica, Tan Samir, Tan Sharie, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Victoria, Unabia Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villafuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa, Suárez, Villarica, Villalago, Yap Eric, Yap Victorio, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10283. Abante, Abelia Nosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragonés, Aumentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Cardema, Celeste, Tungalauco, Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Crisologo, Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Enverga, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Rudis, Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed, Christopher Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Areresco, Hataman, Halusso, Siménez, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Leachon, Makapagal Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles, Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco Núñez Malaniaon, Oaminal, Ordanes, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tiyango, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Unabia, Ui Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villarasa, Suárez, Villarica, Yap Victorio.
With one hundred eighty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 10283 is hereby approved on third and final reading. The Honorable Floor Leader, Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number 10295 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
There is a motion and hearing no objection, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number 10295, an act separating the cities of Naibwan, Lagnas, Kibanag, Obkob, Abong, Malumak, Kianay, Libertad, Luwaliu, Ilya, Yabat, Salidang, Upper Kaiwan, Dayaga, and Timbangan from the barangay batasan in the municipality of San Jose, province of Occidental Mindoro to constitute a distinct and independent barangay to be known as barangay Naibwan. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10295. Honorable Representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abelia Nosa, Abu, Abwekzaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hennaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondoc, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Cabatbat, Cabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan, Cayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Culiantes, Crisologo, Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Naguok, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De los Santos, De losso, Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudis, Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Briseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Areresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera de Hofer, Halusso Javier Jiménez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Leachon, Legarda, Lim, Linkaychon, López, Loyola, Usotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Nagaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jeriko, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco Núñez Malaniaon, Oaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez, Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualde Sierra, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador, Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Hermientos, Saulog, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Singsuat, Singestrelita, Singoracio, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharie, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villafuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa, Suárez, Villarica, Villalago, Yap Eric, Yap Victorio, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third and final reading of House Bill number 10295. Honorable Representatives, Abante, Abelia Nosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragonés, Aumentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Cardema, Celeste, Tungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Crisologo, Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Enverga, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Rudis, Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed, Christopher, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Areresco, Hataman, Halusso, Siménez, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Leachon, Makapagal Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles, Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco Núñez Malaniaon, Oaminal, Ordanes, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Suárez Aletas, Suárez David, Suntay, si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tiyango, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Unabia, Ui Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villarasa, Suárez, Villarica, Yap Victorio.
With one hundred ninety members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 10295 is hereby approved on third and final reading. The Honorable Majority Floor Leader?
Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading-
Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number one zero two nine seven, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
There is a motion and hearing no objection. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number one zero two nine seven, an act establishing in the municipality of Kalibo, province of Auckland, a geriatric medical center to be known as the Auckland Geriatric Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number one zero two nine seven. Abante, Abaya, Abellionosa, Abu, Abweg Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincola, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez, Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banyas, Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayetano Alan, Kayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Griseta, Huiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jresco Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Dimkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marcoleta. Villar, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagurran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulog, Sabiliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Singsuat, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suarez, Aletas, Suarez, David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelica, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umalie Alfonso, Umalie Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Varga, Bergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva Eduardo, Villa Nueva Noel, Villar, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number one zero two nine seven. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abellionosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Aginaldo Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragones, Aumentado, Bagaching, Banyas, Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Celeste, Chungalauco, Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Crisologo Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Inverga, Ermita Buahin, Escudero Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed Christopher, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Jresco Hataman, Halusso, Jimenez, Co Wilton, Konghun, Liatson, Makapagal, Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marinyo, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles, Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyaon, O'Aminal, Ordanes, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Suarez, Aletas, Suarez, David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Unabia, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villa, Villa Nueva Eduardo, Villa Nueva Noel, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Yap Victor.
With one hundred ninety members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number one oh two nine seven is hereby approved on third and final reading. Honorable majority floor leader.
Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number one zero three zero two, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal vote.
There being a motion and hearing no objection, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number one zero three zero two, an act declaring Lake Himbang located in the municipality of Talakogon, province of Agusan del Sur, an eco tourism site and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number one zero three zero two. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abellionosa, Abu, Abweg Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincola, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez, Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banyas, Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayetano Alan, Kayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Elizaldi, Co Angelica, Cojuanco, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Griseta, Huiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jresco Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Ligarda, Lim, Dimkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinyo, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Jerico, Nograles, Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyaon, O'Aminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez, Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagurran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulog, Sabiliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Singsuat, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suarez, Aletas, Suarez, David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umalie Alfonso, Umalie Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva Eduardo, Villa Nueva Noel, Villar, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number one zero three zero two. Abante, Abellionosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragones, Aumentado, Bagaching, Banyas, Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Celeste, Chungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Crisologo Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Inverga, Ermita Buahin, Escudero Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas, Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed Christopher, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Jresco Hataman, Halusso, Jimenez, Co Wilton, Konghun, Liatson, Makapagal, Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marinyo, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles, Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyaon, O'Aminal, Ordanes, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Suarez, Aletas, Suarez, David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Unabia, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villa, Villa Nueva Eduardo, Villa Nueva Noel, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Yap Victor.
With one hundred ninety-one members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number one zero three zero two is hereby approved on third and final reading.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable floor leader, majority leader, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider on third reading House Bill number one zero three zero six, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal vote.
There is a motion as stated and hearing no objection. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number one zero three zero six, an act amending sections one, fifteen, and twenty-one of Republic Act number one one two one two entitled, "An Act granting more electric and power corporation, a franchise to establish, operate, and maintain for commercial purposes and in the public interest, a distribution system for the conveyance of electric power to the end users in the city of Iloilo, province of Iloilo, and ensuring the continuous and uninterrupted supply of electricity in the franchise area." Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number one zero three zero six. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abellionosa, Abu, Abweg Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincola, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez, Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banyas, Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayetano Alan, Kayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Culiantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamat, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Griseta, Huiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jresco Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Dimkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinyo, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Jerico, Nograles, Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyaon, O'Aminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez, Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagurran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulog, Sabiliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Singsuat, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suarez, Aletas, Suarez, David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelica, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umalie Alfonso, Umalie Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva Eduardo, Villa Nueva Noel, Villar, Villarosa, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number one zero three zero six. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abellionosa, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agabas, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aragones, Aumentado, Bagaching, Banyas, Nograles, Baronda, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Bustos, Celeste, Chungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Cojuanco, Crisologo Dalipe, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Di Faustino, Inverga, Ermita Buahin, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed Christopher, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Jresco Hataman, Halusso, Jimenez, Co Wilton, Konghun, Liatson, Makapagal, Arroyo, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marinyo, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Nava, Nograles, Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyaon, O'Aminal, Ordanes, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda Rivera, Roman, Romero, Roque, Sagarbaria, Salimbangon, Sangkopan, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Suarez, Aletas, Suarez, David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sherni, Tehada, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ti Alan, Unabia, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villa, Villa Nueva Eduardo, Villa Nueva Noel, Villara, Suarez, Villarica, Yap Victor.
With one hundred eighty-two members voting in the affirmative, ten in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number one oh three zero six is hereby approved on third and final reading. The following are going to explain their votes on House Bill number one oh three oh six. The honorable Presley Jesus is recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. This representation together with the one hundred twenty-one strong electric cooperatives opposes the passage of House Bill number one zero three oh six, which seeks to grant the Moore Electric and Power Corporation a franchise to operate and maintain electric distribution facilities in the same areas. Being, being served by Iloilo One Electric Cooperative, Iloilo Two Electric Cooperative, and Iloilo Three Electric Cooperative. Mr. Speaker, this representation would like to reiterate that approving the expansion of Moore's franchise to areas where Iloilo Electric Cooperatives have an existing franchise in the same area violates section four of RA nine one three six or EPIRA, which states that the distribution utility has an exclusive franchise to operate in a franchise area. Further, Mr. Speaker, allowing more electric power corporation to expand its franchise will definitely result to an increased electricity rate in the long run. Since it is a private company, aim at earning and even maximizing profit and return to their investments. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The honorable Sergio de Gooc is recognized. The gentleman has three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For letting me explain my no vote, Mr. Speaker, granting more power corporation to expand its franchise on areas currently under the franchise being served by Iloilo One, Iloilo Two, and Iloilo Three Electric Cooperatives is a clear violation of Republic Act nine one three six or EPIRA. Specifically, Mr. Speaker, section four, which states that a distribution utility has an exclusive franchise to operate. Moreover, Mr. Speaker, section twenty-seven of the same law states that all ex- that all existing franchise shall be allowed to their full term. Bukod po sa paglabag sa batas, ginoong speaker, naniniwala ang kinatawang ito na nararapat natutulan ang House Bill 10306 sapagkat ito ay labag sa interes ng mga member consumer owners sapagkat mawawala ang kanilang pagmamay-ari sa kanikanilang mga electric cooperative. Sa matagal na panahon, ang mga member consumer owners po ang nagbabayad ng loans ng electric coop na ginagamit sa pagtayo ng mga linya noong nakaraang 50 taon bago nailawan ang mga lugar na 'yan. Ginoong speaker, sa usapin naman po ng mababang singil ng kuriente na ginagawang dahilan ng mga nagsusulong ng panukalang batas na ito, hindi po makatotohanan ang pagbaba ng presyo ng kuriente kapag nagbigyan ng prangkisa ang Moore sapagkat ito po ay isang pribadong korporasyon na may layunin na kumita. Idagdag ko rin, Mr. Speaker, with your indulgence, na kung titingnan natin ang rate implication, magiging mataas ang kanilang sisingilin sa mga customers dahil sa profit at return of investment ORY na kailangan nilang ipatong at irecover. Magiging malaking katanungan din po kung paano nila itutuloy ang pagpapailaw sa mga natitirang far-flung at unviable, unenergized area sa mga malalayong sitnyo dahil ang mga lugar na ito ay hindi profitable. Inoulit ko po, ginoong speaker, ang batas na ito na nagpapalawak ng prangkisa ng Moore sa franchise ng mga electric cooperative sa tatlong Iloilo ay labag po sa batas at hindi po ah beneficial sa mga consumers. Kayang ginoong speaker, my vote for 10306 is a resounding no. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Adriano Ebcas is now recognized to explain his vote. The gentleman has three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And magandang gabi sa lahat. Mr. Speaker, together with the 121 electric cooperatives, we fervently oppose House Bill 306 which seeks to expand the legislative franchise granted to Moore Electric and Power Corporation to establish, operate, and maintain electric distribution utilities in the city of Iloilo where electric cooperatives such as Eleco I, Eleco II, Eleco III are already operating. This representation firmly disagrees with this House bill because it violates RA 9136 or EPIRA under Section 4 which states that distribution utilities has an exclusive franchise to operate. Distribution utilities enjoy a natural monopoly because of the capital extensive nature of this industry. The natural monopoly is not without any safeguard for it to be more efficient and cost-effective. Distribution utilities are subjective to regulation from the government. Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, if we grant more electric and power corporation a franchise in the same franchise areas of Eleco I, Eleco II, and Eleco III, Moore will have to build a separate distribution line and facilities for which the course will be recovered and passed on to the consumers. This is an unnecessary duplication course. Mr. Speaker, to reiterate my position together with the electric cooperatives where firmly oppose this House bill because it is not, it is unnecessary this House bill because it is to put another distribution line where there are electric cooperatives already operating in these areas. This will only cause a higher electricity rate to the end user. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Rudofredo Guya will now explain his vote. The gentleman has three minutes.
Sa ating mga kasamahan sa 18th Congress na nasa Plenary at sa Zoom ngayon, magandang gabi po. Mr. Speaker, granting more power, Iloilo I, Iloilo II, and Iloilo III Electric Cooperatives still have their respective existing franchise on the same area is a clear violation of Republic Act 9136 or the Electric Power Industry Reform Act of 2001 or EPIRA specifically on Section 4 which states that distribution utility has an exclusive franchise to operate in the franchise area. Mr. Speaker, na kasama or kasama ang power block, tumitindig ang kinatawang ito laban sa power or laban sa pagpapalawak ng prangkisa ng Moore Electric and Power Corporation sa mga munisipyo ng Alimudian, Liganes, Leon, Yolosina, Pavia, San Miguel, Santa Barbara, Saraga, Adilaw, Banat, Barotac, Nuevo, Dingli, Buenas, Dumangas, San Enrique, at Lonsod ng Pasi. Ginoong speaker, nararapat po nasuriin at pag-aralan munang mabuti ang magiging impact dito sa mga member consumer owners lalo na sa mga nasa malalayong lugar o far-flung area, Mr. Speaker. Ginoong speaker, naniniwala ang katawang ito na bilang isang pribadong korporasyon na ang layunin ay kumita at mabawi ang kapital, ito po ang taliwas sa inaasahan pagbaba ng presyo ng kuriente na ipinanakong dadalhin ng Moore Electric and Power Corporation. Ginoong speaker, kung may dapat po tayong siya sa atin sa ngayon, ito po ang lumulubong presyo ng generation cost at hindi po distribution cost. Bilang mga miembro ng lisatura ay mas mainam na dito natin itoon and focus ng ating inter- intervention. Ginoong speaker, ang totoong kailangan po ng ating bayan na lugmok sa pan- linya ay tulong at suporta lalo na sa mga pangunahin, pangangailangan, paggayan ng kuriente. Naniniwala akong dapat mas palakasipa ang mga kooperatibang nagsisirbisyo sa ating mga kababayan na hindi tagahangan ng tubo o kita at supiling ang tanggang panghihi masok ng mga pribadong korporasyon sa ating mga kooperatiba. Muli, igili-giit ko, Mr. Speaker, hindi ako pabor sa pag-expand ng prangkisa ng Moore sapagkat ito ang magdudulut ng mas mataas na presyo ng kuriente sa mga mamabayan sa Iloilo. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at magandang gabi.
The Chair would like to ask the Majority Floor Leader as to...
Alright, um... Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas for her explanation of vote.
The Honorable Arlene Brosas is recognized. The lady has three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. No ang boto ng Gabriela Women's Party sa House Bill 10306 na nagpapalawig ng prangkisa at preblhio ng Moore Electric Power Corporation sa direksyong itaguyon ang privatizadong kuriente hindi lang sa Iloilo City kundi ang kalakhan ng Iloilo Province. Sasaklawin ng Moore Electric Power Corporation na pag-aari ng billionaryong si Enrique Razón Jr. maging ang Pasi City at maraming bayan sa probinsya ng Iloilo para bang hindi pasapat ang prangkisa nito at maging ang hatol ng Korte Suprema na pabor sa takeover ng Moore sa assets ng panay, electric cooperative, o PECO. Taliwas ito sa matagal ng panawagan ng mga taga-Iloilo na ilagay sa kamay ng People's Cooperative at inationalize ang paghahatid ng supply ng kuriente sa kanilang probinsya para gawing efisient at mura ang electric power services. Sa ilalim ng Moore Electric Power Corporation, madalas pa rin ang brownout sa Iloilo City at baga matay pangpapanggap ng lowering ng power rates, nakadireksyon na, nakadireksyon pa rin ito sa monopolio sa power sector sa buong panay. Kapansin-pansin din na inilalagay din sa amyandang ito sa RA 11212 o franchise ng Moore ang pagbibigay laya sa transfer of shares nito ng walang congressional approval. Ibig sabihin, higit na nilulugan ang dispersal of ownership nito na tila wala sa ibang existing franchise. For these reasons, Mr. Speaker, no ang boto ng Gabriela Women's Party sa privatizasyon ng kuriente sa Iloilo Province sa ilalim ng Moore. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Floor Leader, Majority Floor Leader.
Alright, so, Mr. Speaker, I move for the additional reference of business and ask the Secretary General to read the titles of all bills and resolutions as well as communications.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Additional reference of business, resolutions. House Resolution #2308 urging the Committee on Government Reorganization to inquire the abrupt transfer of the PCIC from the Department of Agriculture to the DOF and its significant reduction from three seats to one seat of former, of former representative in the PCIC Board of Directors by Representative Cabatbat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2309 urging the Committee on Labor and Employment to investigate the reported legal implementation of no-vaccine, no-pay policies in private establishments. Representatives Zarate, Gaite, Coliamat, Castro Franz, Brosas, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2310 strongly urging the strict imposition of a price freeze on all basic necessities in line with proclamation of an extended state of calamity throughout the country under Proclamation #1218 and amid the consecutive rounds of big-time oil price hikes. Representatives Brosas, Zarate, Gaite, Coliamat, Castro Franz, and Elago.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Resolution #2311 expressing the profound sympathy and condolences of the House to the bereaved family of Dr. Ramon C. Barba. Representatives Aglipay, Dalog, Cabredo, Jiménez, Kawagdan, Gato, Co Wilton, Agabas, Balindong, Sanchez, Acosta, and Barba.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2312 directing the Committee on Health and other appropriate committees to inquire on the, on the reported increase in cases of suicide and mental health issues in the country amid the COVID-19 pandemic by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2313 expressing profound sympathy and sincere condolences of the House on the death of former CHR chairperson, Sir Luis Martin Cito Gascón by Representatives Belmonte, Lagman, Limcaychong, Hataman, Ramírez, Sato, Abaya, Amatong, Bordado, Peña, and Abueg Saldivar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2314 expressing and congratulating the 2021 Nobel Peace Prize winner, Maria Angelita Reza. Representatives Lagman, Belmonte, Limcaychong, Hataman, Ramírez, Sato, Abaya, Amatong, Bordado, Peña, and Abueg Saldivar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2315 expressing profound condolences to the family of Associate Justice of the Court of Appeals, Eloy R. Belo, Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2316 expressing profound condolences to the family of Professor Rubén F. Balani, Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2317 expressing profound condolences and deepest sympathy of the House to the bereaved family of former Governor Valentina Galido Plaza, mother of adult Edward "Eddie" Bong Plaza, representative of the 2nd District of Agusan del Sur for her life dedicated to the service in the province of Agusan del Sur and honoring her legacy. Representatives Bascog, Fortun, and Amante Matba.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution #2318 urging President Duterte to immediately suspend the imposition of excise tax on petroleum products provided in RA 10963 by Representative Suntay.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Resolution #2319 congratulating and commending the members of the Filipino Obstacle Sports Foundation for ruling the first world's highest obstacle course race championship in Tanzania, Africa by Representative Mariano Hernández.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution #2320 urging His Excellency President Duterte to immediately suspend the implementation of new tax rates and increases in excise tax for fuel and other petroleum products by Representative Go, Marc.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
Communication, letter dated October 18, 2021 of Speaker Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco, addressed to Majority Leader Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, transmitting the resignation letter dated October 13, 2021 of the Honorable Roger G. Mercado as representative of the Province of Southern Leyte together with a copy of his appointment as the new acting secretary of the Department of Public Works and Highways signed by President Rodrigo Roa Duterte.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports, Report #1309 of the Committees on National Defense and Security and Ways and Means on House Bill #10453. Report #1310 of the Committees on Purism and Appropriations on House Bill 10454. Report #1311 of the Committee on Revision of Laws on House Bill 10455.
All aforementioned reports refer to the Committee on Rules. The Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that all bills and resolutions passed on third reading. We immediately refer to the Senate for their appropriate action, so move.
There is a motion as stated. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, in behalf of the majority, I move that we elect the following members for a bicameral conference committee. As members of the Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill #300 or an act further promoting the entry of foreign direct investments in the country by amending Sections 4 and 8 of Republic Act #7042 as amended, otherwise known as the Foreign Investments Act of 1991, and Senate Bill #1156 or an act promoting foreign investments amending thereby Republic Act #7042 otherwise known as the Foreign Investments Act of 1991 as amended and for other purposes. For the majority, Representative Sharon S. Garin, Representative John Reynold M. Tianco, Representative Victor Ayap, Representative Rosana Ria V. Vergara, Representative Wesley Gachalian, and Representative Xavier Jesús D. Romualdo, and for the minority, Representative Stella Luz A. Kimbo. So move.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Right. Mr. Speaker, in behalf of the majority, I would like to move that, uh, to, I'd like to nominate and elect Deputy Speaker Michael L. Romero as Deputy Speaker for Political Affairs, so move.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, there being no other business to be transacted and with leniency, I move that we suspend session until tomorrow, November 9, Tuesday, 2:00 p.m.
Session is suspended until November 9, Tuesday, 2:00 p.m. Huh? Oh.